We will go ahead and get started. Please join me in saying a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
So Member Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of June 9th, 2020?
It's all moved, Councilwoman Gray.
Second Days.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The June 9th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters. We will move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications, number one, Seventh District.
I'm sorry, yeah, receive and file and the subdivision plat. Now, I'm gonna change that, but I'm gonna pull, I'm gonna hold on this. I need some more research on this one, so, uh, please hold.
So ordered.
Number two, Second District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Number three, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Number four, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Number five, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the change of doing business and name. Be approved as requested, please.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, um, does Councilman Tracus not want to include the change of address?
Yeah, that's fine. Include the change of address. Let's just do the motion over. Receive, file, and the change of doing business and the change of address be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Item number six.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Send motion through item number nine, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation pursuant to the county executive's amended request, which relates to agenda item, other communication number eight, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, First District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Report of the county executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. Over time, chapters of our history have been forgotten or wholly rewritten to provide a convenient narrative that leaves out large segments of our troubling and complicated past. Some of the names of those complications are emblazoned on street signs or the names of parks around the country. Perhaps at the time the streets were named, it was no big deal. But it is a big deal. The symbols that define our community should not be symbols that divide our community. So today, I ask Hazel Erby, the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Deanna Vinker, our Director of Transportation and Public Works, and Park Director Tom Ott to review the names of county roads, parks, and statues to ensure that they are consistent with St. Louis County values. I've asked that the review include public input to ensure all voices are heard. The fight for justice will continue. It will continue to be heard, to be seen. Juneteenth is this Friday, June 19th. It's a celebration of freedom, the abolishment of slavery. For many of our families, it's a time of reflection. It's a time to spend with family. It's a time to learn more about a part of our history that did not make it into all classrooms. It's a time to take a closer look at where we are in our county. This afternoon, I sent an email to all county employees, letting them know that Friday will be a day off, a time to reflect on the challenges that our black friends and neighbors face every day. A time to appreciate the changes that we have seen since, and also to reflect on how we can each play a role in the changes that are yet to come. We're in the middle of a movement demanding change, and all of us must look at what we are doing, how we are doing it, and what effect it is having on everyone else. As many of you know, I sent a letter last week asking the police department to review its use of force policy. The police department has agreed to do so, and I hope that process will be an opportunity for growth and community dialogue. There is a time to speak up, and there is a time to listen. We still see marches in our streets sparked by the murder of George Floyd. People are angry, and they should be. There is disparity in every facet of our lives, in access to health care, in access to health insurance, in access to affordable, healthy food, in access to education. All of these disparities factor into a deeper divide between the haves and the have-nots. We are seeing this play out with the COVID-19 pandemic, which has disproportionately affected African-Americans. In announcing that the St. Louis County had received 173.5 million CARES Act grants, I stressed that there should be a special emphasis placed on spending the funds in a manner that addresses the needs of our vulnerable and underserved populations. This is my commitment, and we are working with community advisors to ensure that this happens. Our Department of Health is working with a regional response team formed to help get the funds to the people who need it the most. The response team is led by Jason Purnell, a professor in the Brown School at Washington University and Director of Health Equity Works. This team includes nonprofits and social service agencies that work to address inequities in our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Page. Um, we will now proceed with the report of special committees.
Our first report this evening is from the Justice, Health, and Welfare Committee, meeting held June 3rd, 2020.
Receive and file, and the report dated June 3rd, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second Days.
All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our second report is the Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenses Meeting on June 9th, 2020.
Um, I will have this week's report after. Uh, we've received file, and the report dated June 9th, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second Days.
All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Um, in this morning's special committee meeting, we learned that humanitarian and childcare grant applications are coming in as expected. The deadline for the 9.5 million in humanitarian grants is tomorrow. With one date left to apply, organizations providing services for child wellness, seniors, and homebound programs, housing stabilization, and technology have been invited to apply, and current applications comprise just under the allocated $9.5 million. The application for childcare grants is open until June 30th and can be accessed at STLcorona.com. In our Small Business Relief Program update, we learned that St. Louis County has received 1,696 applications from our small businesses requesting $19,380,977. I am delighted to report that 18.9% of the applications came from minority-owned businesses and 36.4% from women-owned businesses. Councilmembers should expect to start receiving applications this week from, uh, an accounting audit, and our recommendations are due to the county executive's office by July 6th. We were advised this morning that the county care team's economic rescue team, chaired by volunteer advisor Rick Stevens, met to adopt bylaws, schedule future meetings, and establish working groups to focus its COVID response on four primary areas. Those are small business and industry, community development, minority, minority and immigrant-owned business, and workforce development. We touched briefly on CARES Act lease expenses, which comprise a tiny percentage of overall, uh, budget, as well as anticipated upcoming expenses exceeding $100,000, things like test kits, uh, prevalent study, and PPE. Uh, we also picked up our ongoing debate about the municipal league's $47 million request and reiterated our need for more information as to not only the legalities of the request, um, but what the money is intended to cover, how the municipal league came up with that number, and how they, how they plan to engage the public in a transparent and accountable use of the money. Uh, and finally, we announced that in order to best meet, meet the needs of this committee, while also conserving bandwidth for our overall council in addressing these multiple crises of COVID funds, um, the ongoing conversation about transforming the way we deliver public safety services, as well as diversity, equity, inclusion throughout county government and our procurement processes. Effective immediately, this oversight committee will meet every other week. So please join us at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, June 30th via WebEx. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Madam Chair, the third committee report is from the Committee of the Whole Meeting on June 9th, 2020.
Receive, file, and the report dated June 9th, 2020 be adopted as submitted.
Second Days.
All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now at our public forum portion of our agenda. Um, a few reminders. You all probably know all of this by heart right now, but I will go ahead and, um, remind everyone anyway. Um, so again, we welcome the opportunity to hear from the public at our weekly meetings. This forum is a source of pride for St. Louis County Council and can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in our community. I encourage every person who participates in this forum to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, towards each other, and towards other officials in county government. Um, again, as a reminder, only comments sent to councilcomments@stluisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name and physical address, and the email message must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is what we limit at our in-person meetings. Um, the administrative director or designee will read the public comment into the record out loud during our meeting, and it will be recorded into the Journal. And with that, I will turn it over to our clerk to begin the comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have 25 public comments. Our first one is submitted by Shannon McCullough, DVM, 9948 Litzinger Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63124. "A Few Definitions to Help Express Myself Today." Science: Knowledge about or study of the natural world based on facts learned through experiments and observation. Note: Keyword: Facts. Fairness: Impartial and just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. Right: That which is morally correct, just, or honorable. Where is the science in allowing hundreds of people to march and protest, shoulder to shoulder, shouting and chanting, yet you will not allow that same number of people to meet in churches? Where are the facts behind this? Where is the fairness in allowing hundreds of people to march and protest, shoulder to shoulder, shouting and chanting, yet you will not allow families and coworkers to sit together at tables and restaurants? Where is the science in allowing only 25% capacity in restaurants? Is this just and impartial? Is this right? What is right about allowing hundreds of people to march and protest, shoulder to shoulder, shouting and chanting, yet not allow groups of more than 10 participate in athletic events? Is this morally correct? Is this just and honorable? Where is the science in allowing hundreds of people to march and protest, but you haven't opened up the county council meetings to allow constituents to attend in person? Where is the fairness in allowing hundreds of people to march and protest, but there shall be no spectators allowed at any workouts, practices, or competitions? Where is the right that you allow certain businesses to be fully open, but other businesses not? Where is the science behind these decisions? Where is the fairness? It is time to open St. Louis County fully now, today. PS: Definition of lawsuit: A problem taken to a law court by an ordinary person or an organization rather than the police in order to obtain a legal decision. From Christine Hessel, 4780 Titan Court, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. "County Council Members, let's review some of the situations considered essential and nonessential by county government. Essential: liquor stores. Nonessential: churches and church services. Essential: abortions. Nonessential: elective surgeries and cancer screenings. Essential: protest marches with no meaningful social distancing rules applied. Nonessential: running a business or working at a job to support your family. Essential: needless restrictions on everyday activities in St. Louis County, complete with a snitch hotline number to report offending neighbors and employers. Nonessential: the county charter. Democrats on the council deliberately violated the charter in giving Sam Page spending power over CARES Act funds. Essential: police. In 2017, we overwhelmingly passed a half-sun sales tax to increase their salaries and improve public safety. Nonessential: police. In 2020, some council members want to defund the same police department we supported in 2017. Apparently riots and looting have solved our community's safety problems. Essential: reckless spending in the name of protecting the community from COVID-19. Number one: $1 million on a nearly empty motel. Number two: no-bid contracts totaling at least $1.25 million for protective masks. Number three: spending $1.7 million for a big morgue in Earth City. This morgue was created in near secrecy with no bids. The kicker to this fiasco is that it housed well under 100 bodies. Nonessential: a functional hospital system. With no elective surgeries and diagnostic procedures, our hospitals have a furloughed, have furloughed thousands of healthcare employees and are experiencing serious financial problems. Essential: county council meetings. Nonessential: the public forum part of the county council meetings, according to some council members. Essential: decorum and respect for county councilwomen. This means that no meaningful questions can be asked of them by their male Republican colleagues on the council. It also means that no critical remarks should be made about them in the public forum. Nonessential: basic respect for the male Republican councilmen. Who needs their pesky questions? They're only looking out for the tax-paying citizens in their districts. The hypocrisy, abuse of power, and total mismanagement of this coronavirus pandemic has been staggering. I can understand some mistakes being made, since this virus has brought a lot of unknown factors to the forefront. My criticism is the double standard applied to various groups of people. You're supposed to work for all of St. Louis County rather than picking and choosing. From Russell Dahmer, 7825 Grantwood Oaks Court, Crestwood, Missouri, 63123. "Some cities are suggesting that their police forces are beyond reform and should be defunded. What this really is, is an admission that the leadership of those cities is incompetent and cannot properly manage their police force. I certainly hope the St. Louis County Council is not going to make such an admission." From Kurt Witzel, 3116 South Ridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. "Recently, one member of what she calls the historic female Democratic majority, Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway, was interviewed on a liberal political podcast called Politically Speaking. We assumed the federal COVID-19 funds were designed to be used for COVID-19-related emergency health issues. Maybe we were wrong. Councilwoman Dunaway's talk was enlightening, and I thought all the citizens of St. Louis County should have the privilege of hearing some of her illuminating quotes. In her interview, she says, quote, 'Chairwoman Clancy and I both have small children, and I feel the daycare industry is sitting on the precipice of disaster and has been for years, because it is not government-subsidized,' end quote. Quote, 'We want a separate pool of federal CARES tax money that will support our childcare centers,' end quote. She believes that our tax dollars should go for her children and Councilwoman Clancy's children using a separate pool of money. How did childcare become a public health emergency supported by our federal tax dollars when it is the seniors who are dying? She also says, quote, 'We all agree that North County is where the need is, and that's where all the money is going,' end quote. Quote, 'That's where we, council majority, are directing as much money as we can,' end quote. Can she look through her equity lens and see that there are needs in West County and South County? As oversight chair, should she really only be directing all the money to her constituents? She also still feels that she still made the right choice to give county executive Paige that spending authority.' Quote, 'I don't regret giving the full power of the money to Paige,' end quote. She also said, quote, 'To vote on the oversight of the $173 million would have been unmanageable,' end quote, for her. Does she really have the time to be a county councilperson? She says, quote, 'I have a full-time job at Brian Cave. In addition to that, I am a part-time homeschool teacher and now a camp counselor. I think it is totally unrealistic to say, 'Let's pull together an emergency meeting,' when that is totally disrespectful to those of us juggling other things,' end quote. As a taxpayer paying for your county council salary, I think you are right. You are too busy with personal responsibilities to have the time to properly represent the people of the Second District. Thank you.' From Judy Clark, 7204 Christopher, St. Louis, Missouri. "Sam Page and Ernie Tracus, we are still awaiting a decision about rescinding approval for the non-group home on Christopher. How much longer must we wait and write? There is some talk about another Montinito site at 5400 Milburn in Oakville. Don't pretend you haven't heard about it. Let this serve as your notice. Don't make another neighborhood have to gather signatures and other busy work while you sit back and relax. No neighborhood wants this business in their community. Make it stop."
Madam Chair, continuing with constituent comments, excuse me. Uh, William Coleman, 12385 Worthington, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. "With all of the weaving and dodging by this council, it is quite evident with the attitude of this council, there is no desire to find a solution of bipartisanship. This letter is for the purpose of having two obviously white racist members of the Squad explain why they would abstain from voting for the resolution for Xena Hackworth. She has shown her commitment to so many issues that it is so important to the problems that to abstain surely shows that Xena's two problems are that she is, one, a Republican, and, two, a person of color. This is the Squad leader who wants to thin out the black population from North County and move them to unincorporated South County. This serves two purposes: less black leadership in North and more in the South. When are you, excuse me, when are the folks of color going to start seeing that if I look like I am doing something for you, look behind their back for what they want in return? In this troubled hour of this country, we need to work together. Would you tolerate having Rosa Parks' name being removed from Highway 55? She represents part of an era that we are talking about. I have not heard of any one of either color that would suggest that. Maybe that is a starting point. Shame on you, Queen Clancy and Tagalong Dunaway." William Coleman. Following comment from Richard and Kathy Ellis, 7140 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. "We're hoping to be involved with your meetings in person very soon, but until then, we'll write in our concerns. Through research, we have found that Montinito is a medical treatment facility and, more specifically, a psychiatric treatment center treating patients with co-occurring eating disorders and substance abuse disorders. We were failed by our county building department when this was not recognized. Montinito, a psychiatric treatment center, should have been required to apply for a conditional use permit and then be required to have a hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission, where we could all be involved and voice our concerns. Montinito tried to keep everyone in the dark because what they're trying to do is very wrong. Dr. Page, as a physician, if you look into Montinito's business, business profile, you will find that they are very clearly a psychiatric treatment center and not a group home, as they stated so they could try to conduct their business from a residential neighborhood. We ask that you please do the right thing and stop this wrongdoing. Montinito is not a group home as described in the revised Missouri statute 89.020. Thank you for your consideration." Following comment from Amy Eichmann, 2142 White Lane Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. "Regarding small business relief grants, what is taking so long to get those checks out? Frankly, it calls into question the management ability and motives of those administering the program. Why does the post dispatch insinuate that Republican council members support Sam Page? Democrats have the majority. Democrats are 100% running the show. They need to own it, for better or for worse. Republicans don't have any real power here, and in fact, have been shut out. When will the council end these virtual meetings? Open up the meetings to public attendance, get back to normal. Regarding COVID-19, we keep talking about cases, cases, cases. The media is using that to refer to positive test results. When people go to the hospital for elective surgeries, they are now routinely tested for COVID-19 whether or not they are symptomatic. Those positives are not clinically meaningful. What is clinically meaningful are those symptomatic patients who wind up in the hospital, certainly on ventilators or ICUs. Those are dangerous cases. Your risk of getting really sick from COVID-19 is incredibly dependent on your age, overall level of general health. Context matters. The media and some politicians are both confusing and conflating several different data points in an apparent effort to stir hysteria. Numbers of deaths and hospitalizations are drastically down from their peak and declining. See Monday's COVID Tracking Project for details." And those, that was in quotes, or in parentheses. Stop scaring people. Educate and assist those in the high-risk group. Everyone else should stop buying into the panic porn. We have a 99% overall recovery rate from this virus. The economic health of this region is being directly damaged by the decisions of the Democrat mayor of St. Louis, the Democrat county executive, and the council of St. Louis County. We do not expect you to choose health over wealth or wealth over health. We expect you to choose both. It can be done with competent management and leadership. Finally, any talk of defunding the police should be DOA. There will be bad actors in every profession, but we don't dismantle surgical centers over a malpractice suit. Political will, smart policy, and competent management are the keys to successfully promoting a culture of integrity within the police force. Thank you. Excuse me. My name is Matt Muran. I reside at 1441 Collins Avenue in Richmond Heights. As a realtor, I know the importance, the importance of home. As a realtor, I know the importance of home. During a global pandemic where people are encouraged to stay at home, it is essential that people have a home to stay in. I want to thank Dr. Page and the county council for the $12 million of COVID relief effort that will go towards housing. Dr. Page's characterization of this time as a public health crisis, an economic crisis, and a humanitarian crisis is an apt one. Money for rent and mortgage assistance, homelessness prevention, utility assistance, and more is critical in addressing all three of these crises. People able to stay in their homes, whether they are renters or homeowners, will be more likely to stay healthy and be able to bounce back quicker if they have lost a job or experienced economic distress due to COVID-19. Thank you again to the county executive and the county council for your efforts in keeping people safe and healthy and able to stay in their homes. Only comment from Patty Cantor, 8025 Maryland Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105. Today, the state of Missouri fully opened from the COVID-19 lockdown, not St. Louis County. We continue to be locked down as much as Sam Page can mandate. If you look at the ZIP code map of the outbreak in the county, you will see the hardested areas, North County. North County ZIP codes have calmed to one, two, or three, or even zero cases a day. Enough is enough. Open this county today, Sam Page. We will not forget this in August. Many, many people have been shopping, eating, and partying in our surrounding counties and then returning home to St. Louis County. Revenue lost. I have a whole new appreciation of shopping, eating, and enjoying life elsewhere. I haven't entered a store in St. Louis County since February and don't plan to go anytime soon. On another topic, I was appalled that the Squad of Dunaway and Clancy abstained from the resolution to vote to honor Ms. Xena Hackworth. I found it small-minded, petty, and political. With all the stress and crisis occurring today, don't you think it would have been nice for the Squad to celebrate someone that has given so much to our community? How sad you missed the opportunity. As for Montenegro Medical Treatment Facility, there seems to be absolutely, positively no excuse for allowing this facility to be permitted on Christopher Drive. What is the council thinking? Why are you making the people in this neighborhood beg and plead to do what should have been done in the first place? What happened to this county council? I think the citizens of the county need to be a little more invested in what is going
Continuing from Celeste Whittle, 3116 South Ridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. Last week, it was shameful watching privileged Democrats Lisa Clancy and Kelly Dunaway acting as both judge and jury when Ernie Trakus nominated Ms. Xena Hackworth, a local African-American woman, for a county resolution recognizing Ms. Hackworth's many and varied accomplishments locally, nationally, and internationally over several decades. Ms. Hackworth's personal accomplishments were then judged by Clancy's and Dunaway's privileged standards, with Clancy and Dunaway seemingly pronouncing Ms. Hackworth guilty of not living according to the standards of how Clancy and Dunaway think everyone, including African-Americans, should live. The jury of Clancy and Dunaway attempted to sentence Xena's resolution as substandard by voting abstain. Same intent, shameful. Clancy and Dunaway weren't being asked to sit in judgment of Ms. Hackworth's many personal accomplishments. That's a role best left for God. Instead, they were merely being asked to acknowledge Xena's contributions and how proud her family and friends are of her many achievements. Few of us will ever accomplish half as much as Xena. But limousine liberals, Clancy and Dunaway, looked down their haughty noses on Xena and refused to recognize Xena's successes because they don't agree with nor like the issues that are important to Xena. So Clancy and Dunaway judged Ms. Hackworth and her personal achievements from their narrow, bigoted viewpoint and sentenced Xena's achievements as substandard by abstaining. Shameful. Clancy and Dunaway are typical limousine liberals who see everyone else as bigoted except themselves. They run their big mouths, judge, and pander through their own lucky prisms, and believe they know what's best for everyone. Well, they don't know. Not everyone thinks and lives their privileged way. Clancy and Dunaway haven't walked in Xena's shoes, nor traveled Xena's road, nor considered why Xena's many activities are important to Xena. Instead, Clancy and Dunaway judged Xena from their high throne, and they pronounced Xena's accomplishments as not deserving and tried to halt Xena's resolution. Shameful. Ms. Xena Hackworth, congratulations on your accomplishments. Thank you for your service, dedication, and activism on many important causes. You're an amazing role model. Predictably, Clancy and Dunaway will resume their phony limousine liberal pandering. But last week, they proved they are just two bigoted women who refused to vote yes on the accomplishments of Xena Hackworth, a local African-American woman trying to make a positive difference because Clancy and Dunaway didn't approve of Xena's accomplishments. From Jamie and Joseph Adams, 7715 Benmore Street, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123. As other areas of the country are suggesting the defunding of the police, as registered voters, I highly encourage the council to reject all defunding efforts in St. Louis County. Our police force is critical to good law enforcement, maintaining justice, and property, safety, and values. From George Weinbright, 9817 Veer Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63126. The renewal of my vehicle license plate is due this month. In the past, I have experienced long wait time at the local license bureau, and I have mobility issues. Consequently, I chose to use the Missouri State online website. I gathered all the required information and logged in. No problems until verification of 2018 and 2019 personal property tax receipts, which website would not accept. When I contacted an employee at the local license bureau, I was advised St. Louis County does or has not forwarded this information to the state. In my opinion, the county taxpayers are being penalized as this info is public and available on the county website. My question is simple. Why not? And when will the county council instruct the St. Louis County Revenue to rectify this situation? From Beth Rug, 7201 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, 63129. I am writing in to address the property at 7190 Christopher Drive. This is a single-family residence that Montenegro intends to run a medical treatment facility out of. Montenegro purchased the property by telling St. Louis County they would be running a group home in a residential area. In speaking with Montenegro, they do not identify as a group home, nor do they tell prospective clients that they are a group home. They deny it. I understand that the legal rationale for the intended use of the property under a formal review. Exactly who is reviewing the rationale? The same people that haven't been able to produce the documentation requested by Councilman Trakus and the residents of Christopher Drive? Have they finally been able to locate the case law cited by Montenegro's attorneys? Have they done research on the for-profit corporation trying to exploit a quiet neighborhood? When can we expect the county to do a site visit? Would a formal review not entail having the county councilor's office come out to determine the property's suitability for intended use? Proximity to other homes and the impact on the existing footprint and community of neighbors? Or is this just derived from emails and a lot drawing on someone's desk? Has Beth Orwick thought about looking out her family room window or bedroom window only to see a commercial business with a parking lot across from her? Does she have any interest in protecting neighborhoods from being invaded by big business? What's more important to St. Louis County? Adhering to outdated zoning ordinances open to loose interpretation? Zoning that should have been addressed long ago by the county as land continued to be developed for single-family residences? Or is it looking at what's in actual, the best interest of the residents of unincorporated St. Louis County by denying a commercial business from coming into a residential neighborhood? I am extremely disappointed with the inconsistencies and negligence of St. Louis County across several departments. They have failed to act in best interest of unincorporated county citizens. I sincerely hope that they use this opportunity to address and correct how they have failed us. Residents of unincorporated St. Louis County, please visit savelyourneighborhoods.com. Allowing this would set a precedent, and your neighborhood could be next. From Dennis Daniels, 3720 Southern Manor Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63125. First, we have a flawed administration of grant money awards to eligible local small businesses negatively impacted financially by the pandemic. Like me, many other businesses were impacted by COVID-19. They expressed similar frustration with the county government's handling of it all. We stepped away from our respective businesses per county government direction and suffered the consequences. Our issues range from conflicting information to ambiguous direction to a lack of timely guidance to correctly making successful applications. Both frontline and behind-the-scenes county employees, up to and including the person tasked by the St. Louis County Executive to lead this initiative, Mr. Jansen Thomas, failed us. My paper trails over the most recent weeks are documented. This is still available by me to share as needed with you and yours. We all feel duped and ignored. I believe no benefit is to come of this for my business, and this is disappointing to say the least. Please try to assist us before it is too late to make a difference. Thank you. Next, I believe that all life is sacred and feel we all need to express our support for local law enforcement. The functions of law enforcement is different from the role of both social workers and soldiers. Please be reminded of this as you work to keep us all protected from those seeking to break the law. Citizens of and visitors to St. Louis County need our local police to be both well and fully funded with the needed resources to protect private, public property, our businesses, and most of all, our people. Our county police collectively provide outstanding efforts, exceptional performance, and key positive results in serving and protecting us. Yes, we need to continue to strive for continuous improvement in all areas of law enforcement. Let's continue to provide support to our county law enforcement and increase accountability for them pursuant to their training, protocols, and like behaviors. We must never forget that law enforcement is dangerous, and every grouping or organization is going to have a few bad apples that must be dealt with in a just manner and with due process. With all due respect, I expect each of you as part of your public servant duty, like our county police, to be a positive, active influence in support of our police.
Continue, excuse me, continuing. My name is Ron Crenning. I live at 7200 Christopher Drive. Why do we have a county council? I always thought it was to protect neighborhoods and residents from commercial businesses moving in and disrupting everyday life. Why would they allow a big business to get into a residential neighborhood when they presented themselves as one thing and clearly are something else? Didn't it pop a flag when they wanted a 19-car parking lot in front of one residential home? I know if this was in front of your homes, this never would have passed, so why do you think we would want it in front of ours? Montenegro is a business for profit, and they do not care about this or any other neighborhood. It's all about the money. You're better than this. Show us you are representing us and not big business. Ron Crenning. Comments from Kate Stratton, 10253 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. The state of Missouri is fully open today. St. Louis County is only kind of fully open. Interim Page, I can't believe you have kept St. Louis County in lockdown as long as you have. Why are you still not allowing kids to compete in sports and only practice? This is ridiculous. You're only allowing restaurants and businesses to operate at 25% capacity. There are so many rules in place to open a business that it makes it nearly impossible to operate and make a profit. What good is this doing? Why are you still instilling fear and insisting people wear masks when many recent studies state that healthy people wearing masks is detrimental to your health, especially if you exercise with a mask on? Why is this pandemic being treated differently than from any other pandemics? There's a website listed in the letter. Dr. Russell Blaylock warns that not only do face masks fail to protect the healthy from getting sick, they also create serious health risks to the wearer. The bottom line is that if you are not sick, you should not wear a face mask, end quote. By wearing a mask, the exhaled viruses will not be able to escape and will concentrate in the nasal passages, enter the olfactory nerves, and travel into the brain, end quote. Dr. Blaylock states that it is also instructive to know that until recently, the CDC did not recommend wearing a face mask or a covering of any kind unless a person was known to be infected. That is, until recently. Non-infected people need not wear a mask. These recommendations by the CDC and the WHO are not based on any studies of this virus that have ever been used to contain, and have never been used to contain any other virus pandemic or epidemic in history. This week, St. Louis County announced that people could go, could still gather only in groups of 12 unless it is a protest, then you are allowed to gather in groups of 100. That's ironic. It's almost as if the virus knows not to infect protesters. When are you going to reopen St. Louis County Council meetings to the public like other counties? What are you afraid of? It is interesting to note that it is democratically controlled counties and cities that are keeping everyone in a partial lockdown. Why is that? What about the wasted money on the morgue built that was never used? Hard-working residents' money wasted once again? Paula Coughlin, 14 Grenada Way, Lydoux, Missouri, 63124. State of Missouri is fully open with no restrictions as of today. Sadly, we cannot celebrate this because we live in St. Louis County. St. Louis County still has your arbitrary and draconian rules in place, keeping many businesses from opening at all and others operating at a tremendous loss to your 25% capacity restrictions. Need to understand that livelihoods are lives. Lost livelihoods leads to poverty, and poverty leads to death. What have you done to the, what have you done to the economy of St. Louis County? Excuse me. What you have done to the economy of St. Louis County will cause more loss and death than this virus ever could. This week, you announced that you are still limiting all gatherings in St. Louis County to 12 persons or less, except if you are gathering in protest, in which case, you can gather in groups of 100. Mr. Page, in your next press conference, can you explain the science and the evidence behind this new policy? How does COVID-19 know not to infect me while I'm protesting something? How does COVID-19 know it should infect me if I'm in a search service or at a funeral with more than 12 people? Last week, I waited in the 30-person line at Schnucks', and we were not protesting anything. We are all going to, are we all going to get COVID-19 now? I think it will be okay because several weeks ago, you declared places like Schnucks' Home Depot and Walgreens all safe to go in with no capacity limitations. I know that you cannot answer any of these questions, but it sure would be great to hear you admit that you have no idea what you are doing. At least that would be a statement based in evidence. Sincerely, Paula Coughlin. My name is Linda Crenning. I live at 7200 Christopher Drive. Residents of Christopher Drive have had no feedback from our St. Louis County Council about the decision they made about 7190 Christopher Drive. This decision will cause the residents so many long-term problems: traffic, lighting, parking, noise, and especially the coming and going of all the vendors, and it's going to take, excuse me, coming and going of all the vendors that it's going to take to make this happen for this commercial business to work. Our Kinnock County Council allowed this to take place in a residential neighborhood. I feel our council has turned their back on the residents of Christopher Drive, and they're allowing Montenegro to do this just because they can. Our neighborhood will never be the same if you allow this to happen. Oakville is a target for Montenegro, and we need our council to stand up for the residents of Christopher Drive. If you allow this to happen, what's next, a 7-Eleven in our neighborhood? Someone needs to be accountable for this and make this right for the residents of Christopher Drive. Linda Crenning. Only comments from Diane Unger, 26 Baxter Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. My comments this evening, hopefully heard by all of you, are primarily directed to the county executive. I realize that you were appointed as an interim county executive. The fact- The fact that you were not duly elected to the position should not absolve you from the responsibilities of that position. St. Louis County residents continue to structure through, struggle through the fallout of COVID. Opinions from all sorts of professionals, end quotes, about what to do or not to do regarding the virus change on a daily basis. For example, we must socially distance. I'm now allowed to host 12 persons in my private home. Yet, I could walk the streets in a mob of hundreds if I were to protest. Businesses are struggling financially. Families are struggling, many both financially and emotionally. However, everyone will still be required to pay their taxes. Money was spent to retrofit, retrofit a large facility that was to be used as a morgue during the virus panic. As accountable person, as the accountable person to all of us, what is the plan for that mortgage, mortgage facility? Revenue was spent, facility has not been used. Is this going to become another piece of vacant property paid for by taxpayers with no benefit to them? Is there any plan to try to recoup any of the spent money? To the best of my knowledge, I have heard nothing about the future of that facility. I believe we are due some explanations. I believe the county residents want some answers.
Continuing from Deb Matush, 1455 Cragwell Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63122. Finally, thank you for Phase One opening. Phase Two is too long away for small businesses still. I ate out at a restaurant on Sunday for the first time this year. There were 18 of us. We could not sit together, not even in the same room. Restaurants are scared of being shut down like you did House of Pain. Small business, the economic engine of a community, are sitting on the precipice of never existing again. You force them to operate at 25%. Do your businesses operate at 25%? I have traveled in countries prior to and just after their fall. It was a sad occurrence in both countries. We are in a fall here in St. Louis County. I guess it wouldn't look so bad if there was not this double standard instituted by this administration. It goes like this. You can't have your business open, but you can go to a big box business. You can't go to church or graduation or have a traditional funeral, but you can protest, protest with hundreds of others. Couldn't protest because of shutdown. Protest because of shutdown because you were, would be an uncaring spreader of the Wuhan, but you can march with hundreds of others continually. Double standard. And then there's the whole mask shaming. I had my annual doctor visit last week. Mask required for entry. My blood pressure was high, not typical for me. Excuse me, not typical for me. We decided we would check it again at the end of my visit. A second nurse came in at the last minute and said, check it without her mask on. My blood pressure went down 15 points without the mask. Now that we are in summer heat, my fear is that people will start dropping like flies, especially those with health challenges. Are you sure you've thought this through, Mr. Page? And how about you, counsel? I'm so frustrated with the actions of this council, November can't come fast enough. You see, Mr. Page, you were not voted in by the constituents of St. Louis County. You were only appointed as interim executive. It seems like you are trying to inflict the most amount of damage to this county with the minimum amount of time you have left. And for the rest of you on this council, you are supposed to work for us. And Ms. Clancy, you said you thought those of us who take time to write letters should be more respectful. And that's 400-word limit. From Christina Lowry, 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I am writing to you again in reference to 7190 Christopher. It is my understanding that this is a second review in regards to Montenegro is underway. I am asking the planning department and the county councilor's office to please review all the facts. For the last two months, you have listened to us quote state statutes under Missouri Department of Mental Health, Tile 9 and Division 40, which the guidelines for group home are defined. You have listened to us quote Chapter 3, Section 40-3.135, which sets the requirements for all residents living in a group home as well as the state of Missouri's Department of Mental Health licensure requirement of all group homes. You have listened to us quote Rules of Department of Health and Senior Services, Division 30, Chapter 86, for in regards definition, definitions of what a residential care facility or an assisted living facility is and their requirements for licensure by the state of Missouri. You have heard us quote non-urban regulations, 1003.107 NU, 1003.181, pages 1 through 5, in regards to requirements for permitted land usages, conditional use permits, and public hearings. You have heard us quote for the last two months that Montenegro, Montenegro is not a group home. They are in fact a residential medical and psychiatric treatment facility. Dr. Page, I know you certainly have a lot on your plate at this time, but with all due respect, sir, do not dismiss the citizen of South County as others have. You of all people, Dr. Page, being a medical professional yourself, know the difference between a group home and a medical treatment facility. You practiced in one as an anesthesiologist for years. Stop the injustice by not allowing a for-profit business into a residential neighborhood. With all due respect, Dr. Page, it starts with you. We hold you ultimately responsible. Please do not let this mistake happen twice. From Linda Valvo, 53 Willow Hill Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63124. Dear interim county executive page at all, the complete disregard for spending taxpayer money has never been more evident than the $2 million spent on a morgue that was never used nor needed. This money was spent without any input from the county council members. So this total lack of concern over spending unnecessary funds sits squarely on your shoulders, Mr. Interim County Executive. I can only imagine what wasteful ideas you have for the approximately $173 million COVID-19 funds that have been entrusted to you to spend. Perhaps you could engage some professionals on best practices for spending taxpayer money. Or at the least, your county council members who learn of their, of these expenditures through the media. Shameful. From Anna Crafton, 7204 Christopher, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. Dr. Sam Page, have you had a chance to look into the sale of 7190 Christopher Drive, which is in the heart of a quiet residential area to the for-profit corporation Montenegro? If so, did you, did, if so, did bother you as much as it has me that a business had to stoop to bending the truth to get the sale approved without any review or approval from our county representative? What will you do to skirt the zoning laws that don't jive with what they really plan to do with the property? Please stop this big business from taking advantage of St. Louis County. And our final comment this evening is from Jeff Lowry, 7186 Christopher Drive. I live next door to the above-mentioned property. I am writing to you again this week to request that the company known as Montenegro not be allowed to open their commercial business in our residential neighborhood. As stated previously, other than the White House Retreat Home and Queen of All Saints Church and school, there is nothing other than private residential homes that exist off of Christopher Drive and all of the subdivisions that branch off of Christopher Drive. There is not a commercial business to be seen until you get to Telegraph Road, which is also State Highway 231, and as such, would be expected to have commercial businesses on it. I understand that a review process is going on to reevaluate the original decision to allow Montenegro to open up their commercial business in our neighborhood. We, as the citizens of the area, are requesting, if not pleading, with you to make the correct decision this time until Montenegro and their $10 billion-backed company, Levine Lightman Capital Partners, that they will have to find a more appropriate location for their medical treatment facility. I have aid, I have said it before and I will say it many more times. This is not an issue with a treatment facility for individuals with eating disorders. I wish those who are dealing with that, nothing but the best. This is an issue with a large commercial business being allowed to set up shop in a residential neighborhood. Montenegro did not seek out unincorporated areas, excuse me, did not seek out incorporated areas such as Sunset Hills, Crestwood, Belle Fountain neighbors, et cetera, because they have more strict rules and guidelines in place to protect their citizens. Montenegro specifically targets unincorporated areas around the country because it is easier for them to move into those areas with much less problems. They specifically cherry pick their locations, believing it is easier for them to set up their business before the county and the neighborhood realizes what is happening to them. The residents of the area are hard-working, tax-paying citizens of St. Louis County and you are our only defense from this company being allowed to move into the neighborhood. I believe it is your job to protect us. Please do. I have also said in the past that this is also about precedence and if this commercial business is allowed to open their doors, then there would be nothing to stop multiple others from trying to do the same in the county. Madam Chair, that is all the written comments.
Thank you. We will now proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 135, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and Ordinance, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020 of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and Ordinance, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020A of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Bill number 137, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and Ordinance, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of taxable special obligation bonds, Series 2020B of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Bill number 138, introduced by Councilmember Clancy and Ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the St. Louis Integrated Health Network for the provision of new, of re-entry services for inmates at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and Ordinance, authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, RNS Machining, Inc., Real Property Project, Series 2020, in a principal amount not to exceed $1,500, and its taxable industrial revenue bonds, RNS Machining, Inc., Personal Property Project, Series 2020, in a principal amount not to exceed $12 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive and director of administration to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. We will move on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please bill, please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 5, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 5.
Bill number 5 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold Bill number 36.
Bill number 36 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dye and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 76.
Bill 76 is held.
Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill 109. Bill number 109 is held.
Bill number 123, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 123, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, and ordinance requiring the filing of financial interest statements by personnel appointed by the county executive to provide assistance and advice regarding management of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act grant received by St. Louis County.
I move for the adoption of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 123.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 123 is adopted.
Madam Chair, I move to hold substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 123 to give the members an opportunity to review that for perfection next week.
All right. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 20, 123 is held.
Bill number 132, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 132.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 132 is perfected.
Bill number 133, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 133.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 133 is perfected.
Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 134.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 134 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 124, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 124.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 124, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 124 is finally passed.
Bill number 125, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill number 125.
Second, Harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 125, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 125 is finally passed.
Bill number 126, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 126.
Second, Harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 126, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 126 is finally passed.
Bill number 127, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 127, please.
Second. Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 127, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 127 is finally passed.
Bill number 128, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 128.
Second. Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 128, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 128 is finally passed.
Bill number 129, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 129.
Second. Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 129, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 129 is finally passed.
Bill number 130, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 130.
Second. Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 130, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 130 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have four resolutions this evening. Resolution number 1, introduced by Councilmembers Harder and Fitch.
Please read Resolution number 1.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas June is National Homeownership Month, a time to celebrate the benefits that homeownership brings to families, communities, and communities across the United States. And whereas homeownership is an American value and the cornerstone of our economy. And whereas responsible homeownership is the key to building wealth and a strong middle class. And whereas there are racial disparities across the United States and the St. Louis region in rates of homeownership and realtors are actively working to bring the dream of homeownership to all in our region and country. And whereas homeownership confers many benefits, including greater political participation, community connection, and educational and health outcomes. And whereas the housing sector directly accounts for approximately 14% of total economic activity. And whereas St. Louis Realtors and the National Association of Realtors are longtime companions for fair housing, educating their members to faithfully adhere to the law and to embrace its spirit, which is embedded in their code of ethics. And whereas St. Louis Realtors advocates for private property rights, homeowners, affordable housing, and more, and much more. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the County Council recognizes June 2020 as Homeownership Month in St. Louis County and renews its commitment to supporting homeownership as a part of the American dream for all residents and prospective residents of St. Louis County. Section 2, the Acting Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Michelle Sloan Mulford, President of the Board of Directors of St. Louis Realtors, as a permanent token of the Council's esteem.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to adopt Resolution number 1.
Second. Second. Second, from Councilman Fitch. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 1, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number 1 is adopted.
Resolution number 2, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy and Fitch.
Please read the first five paragraphs after whereas, and then Section 1 and 3 after therefore.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Pride Month is celebrated every year in the month of June to commemorate the Stonewall riots of June 1969, which were powerful responses to discrimination and violence faced by the LGBTQ+ community, as well as to recognize the ongoing efforts of those in the LGBTQ+ community to advocate for their rights. And whereas, 51 years after the Stonewall riots, the LGBTQ+ community continues to face discrimination, hatred, and violence, which have caused much inhumane suffering and harm. And whereas such disparities in treatment are often compounded for those who identify with an intersectionality as part of the LGBTQ+ community, such as but not limited to race, culture, religion, disability, and economic status. And whereas, among the many aims of Pride Month are promotion of self-affirmation, dignity, equal rights, and celebration of the LGBTQ+ community. And whereas, PROMO is Missouri's statewide organization advocating for LGBTQ+ equality through legislative action, electoral politics, grassroots organizing, and community education. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the County Council expresses support for PROMO's ongoing advocacy on behalf of the LGBTQ+ community in Missouri, and commits to working alongside them to foster the success of their organization's vision. Section 3, the Acting Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to PROMO leadership as a permanent token of the Council's esteem and support. The Acting Administrative Director shall also send certified copies of this resolution to the county executive and to all departmental directors within St. Louis County Government.
I move for adoption of Resolution number 2.
Second.
Councilwoman Gray.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Abstain.
Councilmember Harder.
I can agree with some of this, but I can't agree with all of it, so I, since we have to vote either yes or no, I'm going to abstain as well.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 2, there are 5 ayes and 2 abstains.
Resolution number 2 is adopted.
Resolution number 3, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for adoption of Resolution number 3.
Second. Daze.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 3, there are 7 ayes.
Resolution number 3 is adopted.
Resolution number 4, introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number 4, please. And would you read the resolution down to the, um, through the first section? Oh, no, no. Just read it all, please. Thank you.
Can I second, should I second first?
Uh...
You want to wait? Okay. I second the motion.
Resolution, whereas the Honorable Mary Louise Carter served with distinction as the mayor of the City of Page Dale for 28 years, having been first elected to that office in 1992. And whereas, prior to her tenure as mayor, Mayor Carter served as alderperson for the first ward in the City of Page Dale for 10 years. And whereas, in her 38 years of service to the City of Page Dale, Mayor Carter sought solutions for rebuilding the city and dedicated her life to ensuring that every citizen had the opportunity for a better future for themselves. And whereas, Mayor Carter worked with the City of Page Dale Board of Alderpersons to bring to the community affordable homes and many businesses, including a movie theater, a grocery store, several local banks, and two senior living facilities. And whereas, Mayor Carter was also a leader in the wider community beyond Page Dale and worked with and was a member of many community civic organizations, including the 241 Initiative, which is a collaborative effort between the municipalities and the Normandy School District with the mission to improve the lives of all residents of the community. And whereas, Mary Louise Carter passed away on June 3, 2020, at the age of 82, was preceded in death by her husband Everett Carter, and is survived by her sons Danny and Eric. And whereas, the passing of Mayor Mary Louise Carter is a great loss for the City of Page Dale and for the wider St. Louis region, and her leadership and passion for public service will be greatly missed by all. And whereas, it is appropriate for the Council and all St. Louis County residents to pause to honor a life that was well-lived and dedicated to public service, to her community, and to helping others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the County Council offers its deepest condolences to the family and many friends of Mary Louise Carter and to the Page Dale community, which has suffered this great loss. Section 2, the Acting Administrative Director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Mayor Mary Louise Carter's family and to the City of Page Dale as a token of the Council's esteem and admiration for her long life of dedication to public service and to her community.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
I might have been premature in my motion, but if it is needed to be repeated now, I will move that we adopt Resolution number 4, please.
Second, please.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number 4, there are 7 ayes.
Resolution number 4 is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Sorry. Item number 1.
Um, please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 2, 6th District.
Will the change of owner be approved as requested, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening. The first order is in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various county departments and offices.
I move for the adoption of order number 1.
Second. Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number 1 is adopted.
And order number 2 is in the matter of the agenda for the regular meeting of the County Council scheduled for June 23, 2020.
So this order was added late this afternoon, um, due to the short notice of the Juneteenth holiday, um, and was not, um, able to be put on our agenda prior to that. And what this order says is that due to Friday being a holiday, the deadline for submitting items for the regular agenda for the June 23 regular meeting of the County Council shall be Monday, June 22 at noon. Again, due to the fact that Friday, June 19, is the Juneteenth holiday that will be observed in St. Louis County Government. I move for adoption of order number 2.
Second.
Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Order number 2 is adopted. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Is there anything, um, any announcements or further, the further items from the Council? All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. You as well.